This conference will now be recorded.
...in 2024. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Member Corala?
Here.
Member DeBattisti?
Here.
Vice Chair Foyle?
Here.
Uh, member Siggi?
Here.
And Chair Verber?
Here.
And also Member Greiner and Varda are absolutely noticed.
Thank you. About the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free of any injustice or law.
Okay, uh, I don't think we'll have any public comment. We'll open it to public comment if there's anyone like to speak. Doesn't look like anyone. Um, moving on, approval the minutes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're here today really to discuss the, uh, the action items, right, that we gave to staff two months ago. And so, uh, let's, uh, let's handle, I guess we're handing it over to you, Kelly. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we'd like to restructure the way that we accept permit fees into, in some sense, the MZ building permits. Currently, we take everything all upfront, the documents and all the fees. And then there's four fees that we take. Like permit fees, DCA fees, um, scanning fee and plan review. Right now, we take them all in at once and then, um, go on, you know, about this. We would like to get that changed slightly to where we only accept what we're suggesting is like a flat fee, which would be like possibly like seventy-five dollars. We're just throwing a number out there. You know, have a assured number. But a, a flat fee for small permits, so your basic, you know, AC change outs, small items. And, um, then for larger items, um, new homes, additions, et cetera, something larger around fifteen hundred, which that fee would include, um, your inspections and your plan review. Then what we'd like to do is once it goes through plan review and then it gets approved, then charge the applicant before they get their issued building permit fee, building permit fees and the DCA. The reason we wanted to do this is because we have situations arise quite often where people realize people go through the plan review and for some odd reason, um, they decide they don't want to go any further. They decide they're going to cancel it. So then we have to turn around, figure out, you know, how much we've spent out of that, um, they, uh, by code get thirty, you know, they, we have to take thirty percent per code. But depending on how long before they request it, it's how much they get back. So, um, we have to then refund it all back. And we figured in order to not do that, we just charge plan reviews because that's, the work's already done. Um, the other issue is accounting, like accounting nightmare for at the end of the year. If we take in, say, thirty thousand dollars for a new home in one year, and when the fiscal year starts and they still haven't had that building permit issued, then we can't take that money in that fiscal year. So there's tons, you should say, Jean just showed me the spreadsheet and I can have her come in here and show you guys the spreadsheet just to do a journal entry for the building permit to get that over to the new fiscal year. Um, it's, it's a, it's a mess. Um, I don't know if it's because of the way we do it or, or what, but it's, it's a pain in the butt. So in order to cut out the accounting nightmare and, um, the fact that we'd have to, you know, keep cutting checks, it's just easier if they, you know, if they go through plan review, decide not to do it, it's already known as a non-refundable fee. Um, we wanted to get your thoughts on this. There's our, there are a couple communities that do it. I just had, it took my time. Glenn had them with me that we had found out that do it that way. Um, a lot of people do take them all upfront, but we figured for our town, it would be easier that way. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. And if you had any advice, Glenn, work for the commission.
So I, I think this is, for a plan review, it's a product of time. So it would be helpful, I mean, I know kind of what happened, but why don't you tell us what is involved in a plan review? And then that will dictate, um, a, a number that we can assess that is reasonable to be placed upon it. And I think we ought to at the same time, look at some of these things that we're doing a plan review on. For example, I think it's a little ridiculous, I'm sorry, for an air conditioning replacement, a, a repair, I just went through it and I paid, you know, twelve hundred dollars in close to a thousand or twelve hundred dollars in permit fees to replace exactly where it was.
Swap it out.
To swap it out.
Yeah.
I think it's getting a little ridiculous personally. But, um, so why don't you give us an idea of what's involved in plan review? And what you think, I mean, seventy-five dollars might not be enough, might be a little bit more. What's involved?
And can you just layer on top of that too? I, I'm not clear. All of our consultants are here or our consultants or our, uh, our, our staff, right? Making sure that we're covering their, you know, hopefully you're not trying to cover their cost, but you want to make sure you're getting close to covering their costs, right?
Right.
Thank you.
For a basic thing like a, a fence, you have a couple left on the ground. For a fence, it would come in, you know, you're looking at town time to make sure all the documents are there. We have to have, you know, health department to make sure that everything is there that we need, everybody's registered. So that I don't really consider. But then it comes in and it's a simple thing where the building official look at it and it's done. Make sure whatever he has to look for, I'm not sure what he looks for when he's doing them. But he looks at it, decides it, and it's quick and a DZ and he gets it out.
So two things that take place. It's the intake at the clerk's office, if you will. And then you have to bring in the, the consultant, the, the professional, if you will. So would you guess that there'd be two hours involved in this, an hour and a half?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
An hour should be covered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same thing with the AC, but, I mean, you said you got charged twelve hundred dollars for your AC, so I don't know if your contractors are tacking on permit fees for running around. But I don't think our permit fee for your job should be twelve hundred.
No, they were expensive air conditioners. So it's based upon, it's based upon.
I'm, I'm look, Ken, I'm looking at this chart and maybe I, I just maybe don't understand this, but between forty-four and forty-five thousand dollars is twelve hundred dollars. So you're, I, I don't want to get, ask you a personal question, but did your air conditioner cost you forty-five?
It was twenty-eight thousand for four units.
So that's eight hundred bucks. Nine fifty total.
Plus, plus.
Plus, plus?
Plus, plus.
Okay.
So it was about, I said around a thousand dollars or so.
All right, cool. I was just trying to grasp.
It's five, I think it was five, so I'll show you. You can look it up right now.
Should, should there be just maybe an application fee as the first box and make that a set number? And then you have all the other schedules.
Yeah, that's where you're kind of calling it.
So in place of permit fee or add another column, the first one would get added.
We still have a permit fee.
I know, I know. You'd add a column just to the left of permit fees on the chart. Call it application fees? Application fee?
So an additional fee to what?
No, 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 no. And that would be?
Yeah, we would restructure this.
And that would be a credit towards the other fees to the right.
Well, why don't we, or just move the plan review fee to when you make the application?
Same thing.
Yeah, and the scanning.
So part of this conversation is if somebody comes in and the initial review as opposed to pulling the permit, and so to avoid having to pay back money. So this is just for the initial review. So obviously for a fence or for a small item, it's going to be different than if it's a full development, a remodel, a house. So there, there's two different things kind of going on here. So but, so look, I think we ought to tackle the bigger issue. And that is if somebody's building a house and they want to come in for a plan review, how much are we going to charge them for that service? And it's obviously more than seventy-five dollars because that's my goal.
Around fifteen hundred or something.
Right.
So that's, that's really where the bigger issue is. Because it's unlikely that if somebody's pulling an air conditioner or a fence permit, they're going to want their money back should they not do it. It's just, it's, we should say, no, thank you, period. But, um, it's really on the bigger.
But if they don't do it, the money's gone.
The money's gone.
They don't get the money back.
Yeah, we're really making, whatever this application fee, you know, whether it be, you know, for a small one, seventy-five, a large one, fifteen hundred, whatever price is chosen, um, we're really going to make that non-refundable regardless.
Okay, so when they, when they pull that, the application initially, when do you, when do you propose that the balance of the permit?
Before it's issued. Because normally what happens now is we send an email saying, okay, your permit's ready. If there's anything else still left outstanding, they say you have to pay this before we release your permit to you. So we always say bring it up when you want to come to pick it up. We can tell them, and we're trying to make it to where it functions into, because we're getting a new software where everything will be online. So this way it'll transition to that as well. So once they submit their online, you know, it'll be the same thing. They'll have to pay the application fee. Once it's approved, then we'll release it by saying, you know, once this is paid, you know, you'll be able to have your permit. So it's the same kind of thing. So once everything's gone through review and Lindsay emails them and says, hey, it's ready, you know, it'll be picked up, you owe blank, you know, for the permits.
Since we have a column called plan review, why don't we just say, charge that upfront as a non-refundable? And then maybe adjust it because it seems pretty linear and the, the effort that goes into the higher cost is probably not the same as the. But that seems like a reasonable way to approach it, saying, look, plan review, that's one of the cost item. You pay that upfront, it's non-refundable. And then everything else you do, once the approval is, is obtained and before you. But maybe there is a way to look at that and see the, the formula seems pretty, pretty linear, even though I'm sure the cost.
That's why we wanted to change it instead of doing the sliding scale, maybe more of a, a flat fee, you know, application fee, whatever you want to call it. Um, saying, you know, for smaller projects.
This is help slide scale, right?
It's, it's a pretty big delta.
You could revise this to the sliding scale. This is, this is, it's a little crazy, right?
There's, it's a pretty big delta between the seventy-five dollars and the fifteen hundred. How do you?
We just got those because we were looking at a couple of other ones down, she had all the documentation that had it and they were pretty similar. One was fifty and I think the other one was seventy-five for their application fee for the smaller ones. And then anything that was like a home addition, um, substantial improvement, they were all fifteen hundred or more.
So substantial improvement, would that be like a pool or a C-wall or what, how do you, what's the kind of?
Substantial improvement is just with your home. Different counts towards, a pool doesn't count with that.
Okay, so like a new home?
New home, yeah.
Or we're seeing a lot of, yeah, like major additions.
Those are the things where it really has an impact, right? Because you're looking at setbacks. You're looking at whether there's variances involved, whether there's, you know, other issues far and every, everything else. So that's more involved.
That's why you have, that would be the larger amount.
So you need a better, tighter definition for that, right?
So that's kind of that. So we just thought that having a, a flat fee, like application fee, whatever you want to call it.
Where would you propose that dividing line be then? So like you said, there's a big delta between seventy-five and fifteen hundred, as well as a big delta in the work before.
Right. Yeah, we could get with, you know, Mike and the other officials deciding, you know, which ones are going to take more. And we can kind of know as well, you know, figure out which ones take more.
It's additions and new homes. I call them the salines, permits, ACs, the fences, the roofs. You know they're going to do that work unless something catastrophic happens and they can't do it, but.
And the plan review is minimal on that end.
Those are like done in one day. It's an addition or a new house, whatever, and they go start going through plan review after they've done through you guys and then there's issues. And they say, oh, maybe we don't want to do this job. And I kind of said, then the money's all.
Yeah. So is that, okay, so let's assume there's an addition or a new home. And you have a meeting, a plan review. I assume, is there a meeting involved or is this just on your end? Is it unilateral on your end or is it coming together, meeting with them?
For a new home?
For a new home, say, for example.
Once they've been through here and they've gotten approval here, they just get the letters and they can apply for.
No, no, we're talking about plan and review.
Oh, plan, we, oh, subject. Yeah, usually they'll contact me and say we want a meeting and I gather up the officials.
All right, so there's, that's a cost, right? What's that? Oh, that's separate?
That's separate.
Is that like two fifty or three fifty or something?
Two fifty for the meeting, that kind of top of the cost of their, um, their flat fee.
Okay, so we're really only dealing with that quote application fee.
When they submit it, when they just submit.
Building permit application is what we're concerned about. We want to make it to where it's separate, you know, like portioning upfront and the rest later. Whether you guys will.
And again, you say the rest later, they pay the rest at the time of issuance?
Correct.
So you don't, you're, at that point, you're, you're reviewing all the actual documents further detail, right? And, and when they, when they go to pick up the permit, they have to then pay at that point based on the skill. Yeah, okay.
So would you define a, in a, a substantial, should we use the definition in the, in the code, if you will, for substantial improvement, something over fifty percent to be that qualifies for a higher price as opposed to a small, for example, let's say it's an addition. If I'm looking at your sliding scale right now, a plan review cost you have down for a hundred thousand is twenty-five seven dollars. How do we get to fifteen hundred?
Well, usually when it's, it's higher, we have a different, we have a formula that we had to plug in, it's not up there. But we just pick the fifteen hundred to cover everything that's, you know, your, all the plan review. Because sometimes they can go back to multiple rounds of, you know, comments. So it takes more time for those. So that's why we thought if we had a larger amount, it would cover everything.
So would it be a credit toward, let's, let's assume this doesn't change, this sliding scale, that we don't touch that. Would this fifteen hundred dollars be a credit towards what the total amount would be owed? Is that how we reply? Because it seems a little off balance if, if it's not.
Right. Um, the way that, because she spoke with one of them, the way she, she, I understood when she explained to me that it was just a flat fee.
Who's she? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Lynn.
Okay.
Yeah, she was supposed to be the, I'll do that. She had said that basically it was going to replace the plan review and the scanning fee that we currently have.
Yeah, that's what I thought, those two columns, right?
Kind of going to be a credit, but not really. Um, because she's going to replace us. We're looking to increase fees across the board, you know, and have we done periodically anyways. So we're looking at kind of just adjusting some of it. Because right now, I'm, I know we're probably not getting the amount we need for plan review. Probably losing money in that aspect to cover officials' review.
Yeah. So you see the point I'm trying to make, at a hundred thousand dollars, even if you do scan and plan, you're three hundred and some dollars.
Right.
To jump to fifteen hundred for that same service doesn't make sense. So where is that? Where do you recommend that division to be?
Well.
Do we say anything under, do we keep this, say like, anything under a hundred thousand is X? Anything above a hundred thousand is Y?
That I kind of was going to leave up to you because my thought was we would just say new homes, additions and a big, a substantial improvement and that's would be the higher amount, which is.
But if I do a little addition, it's, it's a fifty thousand dollar addition, which I know is probably unheard of today. But let's assume that to be the case. It's a small thing. I mean, it seems inequitable to sit there and charge fifteen hundred dollars for something like that when the car, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. The nexus.
If it's not applied too, and if it's not applied.
If it's not a credit.
If it's not a credit.
I'm okay if it's a credit.
Yeah, I know you would say that. Maybe you'd be okay with it.
Yeah, because it goes to the overall thing. I'm okay with it.
That was my, my impression was this is going to be, it's a down payment, that's not.
Non-refundable, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's part of whatever that formula is.
It should be towards the whole bill.
So it should be a credit toward the whole, whole bill. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, however you guys want us to do it.
I'd love, I'd love to see that. Then it's all, then it's equalized. Then it's, everything's fine, right?
Fifteen hundred or whatever would go towards the permit fee, but if they decide not to do it, then they don't get.
Right, it's non-refundable.
Non-refundable, yeah. Which way? They only apply to the permit fee when they go to pick up the permit. They get a credit. Now, will that mess you up accounting wise?
I don't think so because the permit fees, I think, um, I don't know.
They're non-refundable. How would it mess up something?
Well, then you're carrying a credit forward, going forward theoretically into someone getting it when they pick up the permit, right?
That's one, one item. They don't have to go through all their records.
Designating, engineering, building officials, sometimes Corey as well. Sometimes the attorney, it just, you know, all those different fees in there, it adds up.
I'm, I'm taking two fifty as the minimum.
Everybody, plus town time.
I go, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with two fifty if it's, if it's not a repair. Well, I mean, I, I just think it's a little ridiculous that we're charging some of these things for a rep.
It's still going to be credit. So if it's two fifty, and it's a repair and it's, and it's a three hundred dollar, you pay fifty bucks, right? So it's, it's the same time. It's just collecting seventy-five dollars for, when you see all the money that could be spent to the point where they drop the project, they're going to, you know, our base number here, and this is effective two thousand nineteen, is a hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So why not just up the floor number for the small projects to something that's a little bit more current? And to the, and then to the extent that they drop the project, they drop two hundred and fifty dollars. If they go forward, they get a credit towards their permit.
The other alternative that I thought of before she had brought up those other municipalities that are doing that flat fee, my other thought was just keep our current scale. Of course, maybe somebody might go up with the increase of rates. But keep it as that and just say right upfront, you pay plan review and scanning and those are non-refundable.
That's an easy fix.
That's an easy, easy. What does it go when it goes, when the project's a million dollars? Do you, what is that?
We have a formula that we have to plug in on these.
Well, just giving, giving you an idea, what's it a million dollars? What's the fee? The, just the scan and review fees. I mean, the scan is seventy-five dollars. That's, no, we, does that raise up too? Does it?
It goes up a little further. Um, I don't think it's much more. I think it's maybe one to a hundred, one to a hundred and fifty.
What's that?
A hundred and fifty.
Another a hundred and fifty dollars if it's a million dollars?
I don't know. I'm saying highest one I remember seeing, but probably about a hundred and fifty.
Well, we have, just have the, the, the Ocean Apartments application. Do you have any idea what they paid?
I don't have enough of their projects.
No, in terms of what they paid for their scan and review fee?
Well, that's a whole different thing. That's plan review. I haven't done anything with that. This is, I'm talking just building. These are just building permits. Plan review is completely different for planning and zoning here.
But that's what we're talking about.
That's what I, I know.
We're talking about building permits, things that come in through building permits.
I am too now. I thought we were talking about plan review.
You said connecting these two columns together.
You have plan review when it goes through planning and zoning hearings, when they come in for, come before you guys. There's plan review on that aspect, but that's totally separate. Then there's plan review that you can then, when you just have a basic, when you're submitting a building permit. Am I explaining this correctly?
Construction plans is basically what you're suggesting, right?
Any building permit that comes through, um, the town. Any building permit submitted has to go through a plan review. So that's the substantial improvement definition that we spoke about. That dictates whether you've got to come to planning and zoning or whether you can go straight to.
Yeah, totally agree.
So once you've reached that threshold or obviously.
You're in the fifteen hundred dollar category.
Construction, then you've got to go, you've got to come here to plan zoning. You don't have to come here to plan zoning, then you can go straight for building permits. This is just for building permits that we're referring to. Planning and zoning hearings and plan review is completely separate. This is just for building permits that are being submitted.
So if I understand what, I, I thought you were suggesting is that the fifteen hundred dollar level, which we're talking about two levels here for the discussion purposes, the floor for the, for the smaller projects, and the fifteen hundred dollars is a project that submits plans that wouldn't have to come before the P and Z?
Or could have already come through.
Or could have already been through. Okay, yeah. I think that's a great way to. Then, then you know, get a lot of pushback from applicants saying, well, I've got a garage that's costing me substantially less than doing, you know, a second story in another room, right? It's, you got to go to P and Z. It's fifteen hundred bucks as part of your permit application review.
Please, give me your advice on what you think.
Well, I need you to do, do me one favor real quick again, Kelly. Let's, let's take a step back and understand the process.
Okay.
Ken comes in and is looking to, um, add on to his home. He does a preliminary sketch, you know, preliminary plan, doesn't do the, doesn't do the architectural engineering work, right? Comes in just to, to show it to you, to say, hey, what do you guys think, right? What, how does this look? Does that happen?
But that's happened.
Okay. And so then when he submits that original package, the beginning process, he submits a little package, is architect and maybe didn't have a builder then. He's just, his architect submits something. Is that the initial scan, you scan in the information and review that at that time? Is there, is there an initial review at that point?
For something of that type of a job.
Yes.
That's something that would probably end up going, depending on, you know, what it is and how much it's extending, would go to planning and zoning. So that would be a planning and zoning review.
Okay. So what's, and what's the process there, just right?
That process, then we would take it and I would have a pre-op meeting with all of our officials to go over the preliminary plan that he has.
Right.
And they would go through the, you know, they review it beforehand. So then by the time we come to the meeting, they have comments or whatever, maybe some concerns, or they give him the opportunity to ask questions.
Yes.
They come to get some sort of understanding. Hopefully everybody's questions gets, you know, answered. Then they will, then he would leave from the meeting. And then at that point then, submit his plan that he wants to do, proposed plans that would then be reviewed by the officials to come to you guys.
So is that at that point, then we get to this where we are today with the scan and review, what we're talking about?
The scan and review, that's all for building permits. Because we have to scan them into our system. So that's a cost on the town.
Does he pay anything when he submits his initial application?
He's doing for planning and zoning, he would submit for the planning and zoning fee, which is fifteen hundred.
Okay, so this is, this is just for building.
I'm straight here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's clarifying.
Clarifying this.
Once you get through all of them, everything else, when they're ready to submit for application.
Once they come through you guys, got their approval.
Yes.
Then they go to building and permit process. Their construction document, yes.
Then they prepare their construction documents and those are, when they get submitted, then the scan and review fees that you've talked about come into play here. And then you want these, this new scan and review fee, you know, uh, what you're suggesting to be in place at that point.
Because what you're trying to avoid is later on, they say, okay, we're not building this. Therefore, we want a refund of the building app fee. So we, we could do, now I'm rethinking this a little bit. So what we could do is say at time of application for the building permit, that we collect X percent as a non-refundable fee as opposed to, because we're, we're going to be sitting there wondering what type of flat fee goes towards what type of job. So assuming nothing has changed on this scale, which I think, I think there was a consensus here to look, relook at this. But for the time being, we say, okay, we're going to collect a third at the time of application. The time you come in for your building a permit, you got to pay a third. I'm just.
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable. Here it is. You don't pick up your building permit, you know, once it's approved, that's on you.
Yeah.
So we could, you could play with that percentage. You can go a third, twenty-five or fifty. How much?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay. So I think that would be a more reasonable, assuming the numbers justify what we're doing.
You don't have to look at it again if you're just.
Right.
Currently, the ordinance is thirty percent.
I'm sorry?
It's thirty percent.
The ordinance is thirty percent.
So we already have something on there that says thirty percent is not, so why don't we just collect the thirty percent and then, and then get the balance at the time of the permit?
That's where I'm, I'm here. I don't care how much it is. We just want to get something towards.
What am I missing? This seems pretty logical and simple.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, collect thirty percent of the time of the application. It's non-refundable.
But applicable.
But applicable.
But applicable.
Oh, credit, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Credit towards the whole thing, yes. I was just following what they already have.
Yeah, really.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, because if, if somebody wants to, um, change their mind and cancel it.
That's up to them.
Automatically, once they pay that, it automatically will pay thirty percent.
Okay, if there's a second to this motion, then we can talk about this.
I, I just want to have the definition of what thirty percent of what is.
Value.
Of the total, the total count.
Whatever the fees are, whatever the fees, the total fees. The total count.
So, so just so I understand, applicant comes in and they have an estimate of what the cost is going to be. They, not an estimate, they say here's, in the, that's their third agenda item for this, right? We got two more to go for this one?
Yes.
Yeah. So it'd be thirty percent of that number.
I think that's the motion.
So like.
It's, it's, it's thirty percent of the cost.
Say for example, something costs, you know, fifty hundred dollars, I would charge two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Normal.
Well, say that example again. Well, say that example again.
Right now, if someone came in and their project can be fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I would look over here, their total amount that they would pay me that, at that time would be two hundred and twenty-nine, currently, is what we have. So you guys are proposing that as of right now, if we change this, they would owe me thirty percent of the two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
But you said that's already in place.
No. If someone cancels, they automatically forfeit thirty percent.
Yeah.
But right now, we take everything upfront, and then we have to issue a.
So what we are doing is taking it upfront as opposed to.
You just reverse engineering this.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, for accounting purposes.
Instead of doing a thirty percent, we're only just taking the plan review and scan items, just goes to column and paying that amount.
Okay.
As non-refundable. And I would, we would be okay with that. We're, we were ready, actually here in our office, we're ready just to take the plan review and scan fee and.
So then the bigger, then, so since we don't have a motion yet, since it's not seconded, so let's, we'll talk some more. Do you feel that thirty percent is sufficient? Because we already have that right now. So it's fine for the time being until we reexamine these fees.
I would think so.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll say, make a motion.
Now we'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Can we also motion?
Let's get it again.
The motion would be to collect thirty percent and help me out with whatever the current procedure is that makes that non-refundable, and then make it a, a credit towards the final permit fees that are, that are collected. Totality of the permit fees collected.
And is there going to be a floor to that?
No, just, right now, it's whatever the scale is, following the same pattern.
So the, just to understand, because is if, let's take the first column, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars is the total cost of the fee. Thirty percent is collectible at the time of application. The balance is collectible when the, when the permit is issued. Right, sounds, and it, and it goes from there. Whatever that number here in this column, if it's a million dollar fee, you collect three hundred thousand and. Whatever it is. Sounds simple to me.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wish I knew that first.
Can we come back and revisit this?
I wish I knew about the thirty percent first.
At some point, we should revisit these fees.
I actually would, would love to see how, in terms of how the revenue distribution, not revenue, but the, the, how much of that is related to small, small items. And I think we really should make it simple for residents to apply for these small items.
I agree. The, the reality is on the smaller items, what's going to come in, somebody comes in, for example, in AC or Penns, wherever. They're going to pay the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because they want that permit that, as fast as they can get it, because they need to do whatever they're going to be doing. So there, and this goes back to a few weeks ago, when, to look at this entire process and see, to rethink how we're doing it, to make sure it's equitable. And that's a different topic for us. See, right now, we're just handling what their request is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so in the, the code dealing with permit fees, what we would have to bring back is proposed ordinance to revise that. If the way of each right now is thirty percent is non-refundable, however, you can make a request for a refund of the remaining seventy percent. So what we have to do is just tweak that language so that the thirty percent is paid upfront, it's non-refundable. But if we're saying the seventy percent is not paid till the permit's ready to be issued, then we can just delete that language. And if they don't go forward now.
And I would propose that once the permit is issued, it all becomes non-refundable, so that there isn't a refund.
Yes.
Once the permit is issued, that's it. It's done. So that you don't have this issue of going back and getting it. I mean, that's, that's a little ridiculous, quite frankly. Once that permit is issued, that's done. It's like buying something at the grocery store. You bought it.
Most places I've talked to, they're non-refundable.
Yeah. So do you need a motion to bring forward that change in the?
No, we'll bring it forward, and then we can just review the ordinance. But the one other question I had was the thirty percent on the bigger jobs. If they don't go through with it, is that going to still cover all of your consultants' costs?
I think on the bigger jobs, it would.
Okay.
That is the issue, right? And that's what I said before.
But it's more likely on the bigger jobs that people are going to go through with it, right? That's not, they're, they're at that point, they're committed.
It doesn't, I, I mean, if you think back of all the times there was a request for refund, it hasn't been that many times.
Yeah.
But there's been some.
Yeah, they're not.
And at that time, it's a pain. So let's eliminate the issue. And if that becomes a problem, if it's like, oh my God, it's too much, then we'll deal with it.
What are, what are the range of values been for the home applications that have come in?
I've got some that are, most of them are usually for a million.
One to two million, call it?
I would say it would.
So.
One of three.
One to three. So at two million, you've got sixty thousand dollars, is that right? Under this, under this discussion we're having?
Well, how much is the permit fee on two million dollars?
Basically, two and a half percent, no?
Two and a half percent. So what would the permit fee be, is what I'm asking? Fifty thousand?
Fifty plus two.
So, so in our case, it'd be fifteen thousand dollars, right? Would that cover?
I would think so.
Yeah, so that's, feel pretty good.
It's the low, it's the low end.
It's a, it's a smaller jobs, that's the issue. And that's more of a nuisance for people, quite frankly. Okay.
Max Kelly? Thank you.
Next one is response here. I don't know if you had a chance to read my memo, I'm sorry. Basically, right now, during building, not plan review, I'll touch on that one in a second, but during, when it goes through the building permit commission process, it goes through the plan review. Sometimes comments come back from engineers, or zoning, or even building. And we have to then send it back to the applicant for responses to address those. I was informed by Mike that per Florida building code, the legal amount of time is a hundred and eighty days for them to respond back to us. That's a long time to be holding on to.
Well, application, the application is good for a hundred and eighty days.
So I spoke to, Mike has spoke to Tara. I don't know if there's any big community about it, but we're speaking. Right now, we've been, just because we have no policy on it, we've been giving everybody, here you have ten days to respond to the comments. If they can't do it, they ask for extensions, we give it to them. We just don't have any limit. We just been keep giving, but we're trying to make sure the process goes quick because for the state statute, we only have thirty days to approve building permits that are submitted after comments have been addressed. So we're trying to stay on task, and we don't really have the manpower to keep following up, following up, so we're trying to make sure that we do. So if we keep doing these timeframes, we can schedule them. But we also don't want all that paperwork. We don't really have anywhere to store it. That's why we've been scanning everything. So we don't want like piles of, you know, these documents waiting, because we don't throw away the, the documents until they've been approved. And so once we send those comments out, we're waiting to hear back. We have some people that will drag it out, drag it out, drag it out, which I understand, you know, sometimes you have to get ahold of your architects, or whoever may be, to get, you know, revise plans. I get it, it takes a while. So that's why we have, had no problems with extensions. But we've, we had like a policy set up, you know, hey, you have blank amount of days to get your responses. And that way, it doesn't fall through the cracks, but it also gives us a timeframe to, you know, it has to be cut off somewhere.
This is easy.
So we thought, we suggested thirty to sixty days. Saying you have this long to get it in, and then we're going to void it out.
Have a state law, but we've got a state law that's a hundred and eighty days? How does that work?
Well, that's how long a good a permit is for.
Oh, the, the application, not a permit. You're not talking about permits here. Yeah.
But the thirty day requirement on single-family homes, there's this prescribed procedure that they have to respond, I believe, within ten days. So if we're going to hold our feet to the fire to thirty days, then I think we hold the applicant's feet to the fire. Or for statute, they can waive that timeframe. But if they waive it, then I agree, you need a backup plan for, after this time, you got to start over.
Yeah. We just have had no policy in, in town. So we were looking for.
Yeah. I, I think what you're proposing is very reasonable. Ten days, and I, except for one thing, I wouldn't have unlimited extensions.
Yeah.
I would say one, with one extension, one ten-day extension. And that, that kind of brings in, and, and nine chances out of ten, they're going to use all twenty days anyway. So, given.
Most people that we've been dealing with have been able to get it in within the ten days.
Okay.
Kind of, you know, handful of people that say, hey, I need a little time, you know, whatever.
Could happen. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, depending on what the, depending, obviously, it's a little different for a brand-new home, the comments, as opposed to some additions, some little additions. So there's a difference there.
Some of the, I'm sorry, some of the, I think ten days might be a bit short.
That's tight.
Given that potentially you might have two or three players involved in the, in the equation, your architect, your contractors, and so on. I think ten days for the smaller projects maybe, but some of the larger stuff. You know, if, if it's, if we're giving ourselves thirty days to respond, we should at least give them thirty days. That, that would be my view.
I, I kind of like the concept that Christie pointed out, that if it's beyond that, you could waive, I'm sorry. That you could waive the time, and so both of our feet gets off the fire, right?
Yeah.
So I, I don't have any objection to if we're going to grant more time, then it should be a two-way street.
Absolutely.
Because I, I also understand the game that's played too here. And I've seen it, unfortunately, that with the response game, to drag it out. So I'm very mindful of what games can be played in that process. So I, I think, I think what Christie proposed makes a lot of sense.
So the building can, can make copies of it. Chapter one. We could, we could change chapter one. The rest of them, because we can't.
Should you be at the mic talking, by the way?
Just identify.
I have my crystal building vision. So chapter one of the Florida building code, the town, city, you can change chapter one to your liking. So one oh five point three point two is time limitations of application. So it says, permit for proposed work shall be deemed abandoned a hundred day, a hundred and eighty days after the date of filing. And it goes on to say that the building official can grant an extension, authorize an extension for ninety days when it's justified. So if we're going to change these, at this time, you have to change chapter one.
Well, that's up to her.
And that's what we can do. We, right now, we actually have amendments to chapter one of the Florida building code. They're done by resolution and they're old. So part of this process is going through those. We just, in our office, because we didn't have a copy in a ward, we've converted it. So now we have a clean version that we can start going through because it also needs to be updated with some of the condo requirements by Florida statute as well. And they get it consistent with Palm Beach County or wherever the town prefers. So that would be based on what your direction is here today, coming back with that ordinance to make those chapter one amendments.
I think it'd be helpful to just bring that back to us, let us see it.
Okay.
And then we could see how, what it looks like.
Yeah.
And then you get a better feel for it. Going to the second issue you had was the, the abandonment of the permit, you suggested thirty to sixty days, right?
Yes, for.
The permit application.
And I, I think, you know, the sixty days is probably, I, I would go for the sixty days as opposed to the thirty. But that, that's reasonable as well. I mean, if somebody's not going to do something, you want to know sooner rather than later. It just keeps the whole process clean.
Correct.
And you ask the applicant to come back and fetch their documents so you don't store it, or you're just going to discard them?
It could be used on my phone.
Do you ask the applicant to come fetch their documents, or do you?
Um, we usually tell them that if we do not get a response within a certain, by a certain date, then we avoid it coming out, and what we do, gets still public record for us. We scan it and then just get rid of the paperwork. The hard copies, excuse me, the hard copies.
And what do you, you've got, you've referenced here two properties, one ordered, submitted almost a year ago. So give us an, give us an idea of what, what's going on there.
This is a same kind of issue, but with planning and zoning portion of it. So in that aspect, I received applications. And this type, this only really happened this time, but I would want to have something in place. We received applications for two new homes that have to come before planning and zoning. They submitted almost a year ago. And we reviewed it, we made comments, they addressed it. And then they sent back their stuff. We had more comments, and then it just kind of dropped. Haven't heard from them in months. I contacted them probably a couple of weeks ago and said, hey, you know, it's been almost a year since we, you know, initially submitted this. Where are we at on this? Are you guys still wanting to do this? You know, because I've got the paperwork sitting in my office. And, oh, yeah, 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 we're going to do something. My contractor wailed on me, you know, and I've got a new one. We'll be addressing them. But I don't know when. Like I said, that was a few weeks ago. So I don't know how long do we give them to do this, you know?
That's, that's the question, right? Yeah. You haven't heard back from, when you're suggesting the sixty to ninety-eight period, kind of heard you say sixty, right, kind of?
I kind of looked last night, because I was just thinking about this, I'm like, I need to do something about this one too. So I kind of just went on real quick and looked at Wellington's website. For their plan review for, you know, homes and stuff like that, they do ninety days. If it's ninety days abandoned, then that's why I put the ninety in.
No response within ninety days is what you're saying, Kelly? From when you provide your set of comments back to them, if you haven't heard back from them in ninety days, you're saying sixty to ninety days, yeah?
So I, I think there's two different things going on here. In the second paragraph, you're asking for a policy that would be around thirty to sixty days max before we void out the application.
Correct.
What, at what point is that?
Since when we send the comments to them.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about now. The sixty, the ninety days is different.
The ninety days for a plan review.
Plan review. So it's two different things.
Yes, yes.
So I, I would go with the ninety for this, the plan review, sixty for the, for the other. So just taking the high end of what your suggestion is to give it, you know, give the, you know, deference to the property owner or applicant, give them that timeframe.
How often is there an application that has two sets of comments, two rounds of comments?
It happens. It happens.
So Neil, we all do have comments too. We just had an application where the applicant came in, and we gave them comments, and they had to come back to the planning and zoning board as, as a result of comments that we had given them. That was, that was outside of the, these guys reviewing everything.
So the same, the same time requirement would be for both the P and Z's comments as well as the plant, the staff reviews?
Well, we're moving in a way that we would hope that they're going to continue with this process too.
I mean, you guys are already going through the process and you're basically continuing.
Yes.
This is, this is more.
Yeah, I understand, but if somebody, if the, the P and Z committee gave them comments, how much time do they have to come back with those comments?
That goes back to the first part of it. So that's talking about either the ten days with the extension.
Okay.
Or waive the, the, the timeframe for both of us, and then we can work together. That makes a little bit more sense.
Urgency.
If they don't, if they do nothing, we hear, hear nothing back for months, then it's done. And that makes sense, because I, you know, I, I know situations that we've had in the past that this gets a little out of hand. And then we're sitting there like, okay, now it's an argument over things. So this makes it very clear.
An example, if we came up with sixty days, and fifty-nine days, they come back, right? And then we have thirty days, correct, to reply to anything that they've submitted on their fifty-ninth day? Is that correct?
Is that how? Well, if it's a, on the building permit, what we would ask them to do is if they don't respond within the initial ten days, then they waive the timeframe for both them and us. So if they come back on day fifty-nine, then we would have time to review it based on our schedule.
Right. And then they get another fifty-nine days. That's, that's where I'm going. It's like, how many times can you do, because that'll drag it out to the hundred and eighty pretty quick, right?
Do you want the sixty? You're suggesting maybe the sixty is thirty?
I don't know. I just wanted to think about, if I'm on the other side. I don't know. I just want us to think about, if I'm on the other side and I wanna drag this out, I'll hit you every fifty-nine days, you got thirty days to reply. Fifty-nine days, you got thirty days to reply, right? So, I mean, how oft, how, how many times can you do that?
So, we have nothing now.
I'm just.
So, no, you're raising, raising good points. So, what's, what, given his scenario, how does that play out? I think there's a confusion between the hundred and eighty days total.
The hundred and eighty days is more for.
Is a different.
Building permit applications?
That's a, that's a different situation, yeah.
So, the hundred and eighty is the building permit.
In either scenario, how many times can you come back?
That's.
That's, that's my question, in either scenario. Before you say, "We're done."
Christie, you can wrap that up some way, can't you, kinda?
Well, and, and we can sort of, I think, copy the statute, because I think under the statute, we're allowed three rounds, unless everybody waives, you know, how many rounds you can give. So, we can only go back to ask three different questions unless they come back with substantial changes that then generate different questions. But if it's essentially the same application, you can't keep going back to them with more and more issues. So, I would think that we, you know, draft it in such a way that we have a limitation on rounds unless both sides wants to waive it, you know? Because sometimes if they make changes that are substantive in nature, then it dictates new, around the comments based on those changes.
So, somebody comes in, makes an application, and we give a response. They come back with some comments. We then come back with some comments, and crickets. I'm using as example, and fifty-nine days later, they wake up and give a response. 'Cause we waived, let's assume we waived all the time frames. So, i- it's really of no, other than the fact that it's now dragging it out, what's the harm to the town? Because we haven't issued a building permit, so it's time.
Of course.
The paperwork in your eyes, right?
I mean.
So, the only thing you can do is if you wanted to put a limit, and I don't even know if we can, that in no uncircumstance, you know, it has to be a certain timeframe that everything has to be completed. Or it's now done. So, taking away that sixty days is now a, a finite cap as opposed to a repeat performance.
Yeah, if I add it up correctly, that's two hundred and sixty-seven days. You can drag that. Right, so, you know, you got, you got two fifty, three fifty-nines, and you've got three thirties on our side. So, that works out to two hundred and sixty-seven. But I wanted to go back to another question on this. So, you say that the issue really is the amount of paperwork that you have to retain. Do, do the applicants submit all in paper documents?
Until we, for planning and zoning, yes.
Can, can we, man, if they do it, can they do it digitally?
They can.
Would that help you?
But I have to have both.
Why do you need both?
I do digital because I get it to the officials, 'cause they're not in-house. So, in order.
They can't get them digital?
No, they can't. That's what I'm saying. That's why I get them both. I get them digitally because I send it to them, so they can review and get things going faster. I have a paper because I have to give it to you guys in paper.
Yeah, but you don't, you need to retain ours.
No.
Right?
No, but I have to have it for your meeting. So, in the meantime, while I'm waiting for this hearing to happen, I've got this paperwork piled up, ready for you guys until when it's that time.
But that's just for that meeting, right? I mean.
Planning and zoning, yes.
I'm just trying to think of the, you know, I, I haven't been back there, so I don't see. Is, is there, I'm just wondering, is, we're in the digital age, is there a way we can get closer to that? I mean, I certainly appreciate the paper when we're going through this. But that doesn't mean you have to have the paper, right? Cumulating in your office.
We can provide the package and everything for these meetings, because of the, our paper that we're having to fill, unless we raise the rate.
Yes, don't forget the cost is on us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so, okay, so let's, let's take this couple of steps back. How many jobs are you talking about? Realistically, how many big jobs do we have? Now, I know we went through a flurry, but I think that's slowing down quite a bit. But what's, so what are you talking about, ten?
Ten, fifteen.
All right. I think we can live with that. It's not that, it's not that insurmountable, is it?
I just, it hasn't been an issue until here recently, that, you know, I'm sitting here waiting, like, I would.
The issue is with this one particular applicant?
Yeah, so it's, I thought, well, while we're discussing comment period, from that, I thought it was.
So, and so if we, if we have this, this is like a first shot, if you will. So, we try this, and maybe that prompts people to move it along and use good judgment. Uh, maybe that helps quite a bit in, in eliminating some of this. Does that make sense?
It works. Christie, you'll help me run that up?
Well, we'd like to, would anyone like to make a motion on our end, or just to have the general comments cycle over to Christie?
Well, she has to come back with the proposed resolution.
Yeah, okay.
So, we have to see what that looks like.
Okay.
Is there such a thing as a finite, uh, that we could put on it, a end, you know? So, and to, that, that handles your comment, right? Mark's comment about, you know, an end, an end time period, which makes sense, does make sense. So, what would that be? What would be a proposal, ninety days?
I'm okay with ninety days.
I would suggest that we ask her, ask Christie to draft it up, bring it back at ninety, and then see what, and then we can have a further discussion and find what. Does that sound good?
That's on the building permit side, right?
Yeah, it is, ninety days.
Really only one, but then it really only run one round. They take fifty-nine days, they give their comments back to us, we have thirty days. They're getting it back in eighty-nine days. If the drop dead is ninety days, that gives them one day.
Are you talking about building permits or talking about planning and zoning?
Why don't, why don't we bifurcate this? 'Cause it's, it is getting a little confusing. Why, why don't we have two, well, two different scenarios? One is.
Application.
Application to P and Z, the other is application for building permit, 'cause they're two entirely different things, right? I don't know why we're blending these two.
'Cause they were blended here.
I know. But it's our job.
I'm going ten, sixty, ninety, that's.
We're gonna kind of, we're gonna.
Yeah, I would prefer ninety, necessarily, for the application.
Can we, can we, can we modify our terminology for the moment to say, building permit application or planning and zoning application? 'Cause that's, I, I find this going back and forth in my brain.
So, for building permit applications, what are you guys recommending?
That's your first bullet?
Yes.
The ten days. That's to get a response back, that keeps it going.
Again, I'm, I ask.
But they have a one, one-time extension. Or, no, they can still do it, but they have to waive the timeframe.
Right. The idea that we are, you know, we should make the rule so there are as few exceptions as possible, as far as I'm concerned to this stuff. So, if you're getting a lot of extensions on the ten days, then we probably should widen it a little bit.
I haven't had a lot. Most of them are complying with the ten days.
Then that's.
I've had a handful, that's our extensions, but not.
And quite frankly, if you go countywide, statewide, for that matter, ten days is usually the response.
And business days.
Business is correct.
Ten days. So, usually that is, that's pretty common. And if, and generally, there's a, there's a extension of some kind. They're, they're pretty reasonable.
Yeah. We haven't had many, and more than one. And then for the planning and zoning application, the ninety days.
Correct. That's, I'm suggesting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, can, can we go back to the building permit out? So, it's ten business days response, and then we're talking about an extension. Is this a one-time through the process, ten-day extension? How, how, how does this work? 'Cause I, I don't, that's a piece that we're, it's up in the air for me.
Would be per comment period? Like, say, you send comments, they got ten days to respond back to as they need an extension. We get it within twelve. And then we review it, and there might be another round of comments. We give them ten days at the end. Do we have to allow them to do it that period?
So, you, you have a one-time extension for that comment, for that comment period. So, the practical thing here, I mean, it, it's, we're not a big town. We don't have a lot of commercial development. If it was a mall, a plaza, apartment building, this would, this takes a little bit longer. But we're talking about a single-family home, generally speaking. You're to, talking about one to two comment periods generally, I would imagine. I, very rarely does it go to three, I would, I would assume.
I don't deal with too much of that, but I don't think I see.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I, I just, I'm trying to envision how that would get there. So, you're, there's a practical side of this. So, I think we're fine with this. If it becomes an issue, we can always revisit it. But at least we have a parameter.
Right, is the extension ten days? Is that what we're saying?
One ta, one ten-day extension. And that, and what, what happens is that satisfies what I was talking about. I mean, there could be a time period where the architect is out of town.
Well, that's exactly.
So, then, there you have that twenty days. But anything beyond that is waived, because now the timeframe is on us as well.
Yes.
So, now we're waiving, we're on, we're in parity. We're all on the same equal footing.
And so, this process, they have one opportunity for one ten-day extension. Is that correct?
Per comment period.
Per comment period, so it's, why not make it twenty? So.
No, 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 no. Pull their feet to the fire.
So, you, you, you wanna go through cycles.
You want, most people will get it back with the ten days.
And so, is it arbitrary whether they get the extension? Who, who gets the extension?
Yeah.
Usually they just ask either me or.
So, ninety percent of the time, you're gonna give it to them, right? So, it's twenty days.
You don't wanna do that.
No, I know, but effectively.
Effectively, yeah.
To me, this.
Effectively, you're right, but you don't wanna give them the twenty days, because ninety percent of the people will do it within the ten. So, that keeps it going.
I, I'd rather pull it back to like five days, if we're gonna do that.
That's, that's, having gone through it.
Fifteen days.
It's, it's impossible to get. You know, your, your architect is on vacation, you're done. And you're gonna end up with these exceptions and go back and ask for permission.
Well, it's, it's, then it's almost two and a half weeks of calendar days.
What's the harm? I mean, I don't understand the harm of.
Well, then, I, I don't know why we have unlimited ten-day extensions. To me, it, it doesn't hold anybody's feet to the fire.
One, one ten-day extension.
Well, that's not what I heard. Per comment period.
Right, but that's twenty. But the reality is, that's not really what's going on. The reality is that people are making these, you know, making the adjustment changes and getting back to these guys, right? So, again, if someone's gonna game the system, they always can game the system.
I'm fine with it, and they come back with some other.
Okay.
Okay. So, there, there's, the other side of this is there's economics involved. And typically, a developer, and that's who really, ninety percent of the time, we're dealing with a developer of some kind, within these types of situations. Time is money. They want, they really wanna try to move it along, so.
I could show you.
Except for the guy that I.
We could show you other.
I know.
So, Kelly, um, and Christie, we, do, do you feel that we've given you? The feedback, and I guess here, as we said, Christie, you'll give us your suggested changes to the code. That's really where we're gonna, this is gonna, this is gonna affect and lay into the code, is that correct?
Right. And we can look at it when, when she comes back.
When she comes back with the resolution.
Right.
And the planning and zoning, ninety days, is that calendar days?
Well, that's a long time calendar days.
I don't know, just, well.
It's gonna be business days, yeah.
Ninety calendar days.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
All right.
Business days, it gets a little confusing.
Uh, let's move on to item, the next item, right?
Right.
Kelly?
So, the big issue, one of the big issues in town is the narrow streets and, um, no place for staging for the construction. So, I guess, my girlfriend, I've been here about two years, next month. And since I've been here, I've not seen any pre-construction meetings. It mentions in our handbook, but it's not been really happening. I don't know if it happened before me, I don't know, I can't say. But it does mention, you know, I think it said suggested in our handbook. But I'm thinking to make it mandatory before a building permit is issued for the new homes addition. Like, that might be a major construction that's gonna be blocking a road, or whatever it may be. Um, we were thinking of making it mandatory before it's issued. So, they would have to submit, they have a meeting with the, um, building official, zoning, uh, myself, and public works, um, and place chief. They sit down and go over traffic management, um, where they plan on, you know, staging the construction site and all that, and having a plan, and that needs to be approved before the building permit is issued.
I, I'm, so this is my thirty, I've been here thirty-four years. This is kind of a consideration ordinance. And what I've noticed over that time period, it was, wasn't an issue, right? And then it's become an issue because people are inconsiderate about their neighbors. And so, um, I think it's a little overkill to have a meeting about traffic management with all those individuals, personally. I think the most important thing is to have it with their chief, with the law enforcement, to make sure that there is clear traffic and, uh, things of that nature. I don't think you need to have the public works, I don't think you need to have the, you don't need, I don't think you need all, because really, it's a traffic management issue. There's more on law enforcement to make sure that there's, there's, we used to have a policy that they can only park on one side of the road. I mean, we have a small town. There's only so much staging we can really do realistically. So, we have to be cognizant of that. We're not like some other town that can, well, at one point in time, we did make an arrangement with a Windexy that was down there, that's how far this goes back, that if it was a big project, it would let us park there and do things. So, some of that is, has been eliminated over time. So, what do we do? So, I think some of that management has to be with law enforcement, to make sure that there's clear fire safety, health safety, 'cause that's really what it amounts to. And then the convenience factor of the residents. So, for the most.
And the livability for the residents. That one resident talked about, uh, uh, that they just got, that was, well, of course, that house, the House on the Ocean construction was a crazy eight-year process, but that one poor resident with trucks idling out in front of her house every, every day, six days a week.
I think that's.
I mean, that's, that's unacceptable, right?
That's equal to the consideration of what the city wants to manage. I think the neighbors that are impacted are, are who we've heard from the most here. And it's ridiculous, the way they've been treated. And I'm really concerned on this one project that we approved. It's on Dolphin or, what's the, One Way Street, uh, just north of Nomad.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, where there's two tiny lots in, you know, Ocean View. I mean, those poor people, they, they can't get like, you know, their, their deliveries.
You can't get one car down the street there.
Garbage truck.
So, that, that is the convenience factor, that's what I meant, the convenience factor of the neighborhood.
But I, I, I don't know, I just, I think we need to be a lot more considerate. I, I think pushing it off to say, okay, if it meets, you know, health and safety standards, I, I think it needs to be consideration standards to the neighborhood.
I said that, I thought I did. I'm sorry if I didn't.
No, you did, no, you did.
But, I mean, instead of having all those people, we don't need to have all those people. It's really a public safety, a deb can, can meet with them and say, no, and the chief, and whoever, and that, and, and handle that management aspect. That's what it used to happen. Believe me, that's, and it was very strict when, when we had Chief Hillary here.
Oh, yeah.
And Doc, these guys, these guys were running a ship, I'm gonna tell you. It was, there was no monkey business, and, and we survived, fine.
And I felt that, like, the building official one, that should show up too, because a lot of them, and fortunately, I know it's on them, they sign for this handbook, not reading it. And they don't understand the expectations of the town, the requirements that we have. That's why I thought if the building official was there, he could go over what's expected out of them.
But I, I've taken our ordinance.
Aren't you going over that with them to begin with, or no?
We don't go over that handbook.
I'm giving the handbook, but like you said.
They don't read it.
Like, they don't read your plans or permit, but that's a difference.
Like getting, it's like getting a new car and then looking at the handbook, maybe when there's a problem.
Yeah.
But, I think our ordinance refers a lot of this parking stuff to the building official, which I don't think is correct, because I have no control over.
That's why I said it's more on the police end, as it is on the building official end. 'Cause he has no, he has no rule in there.
Just like Ocean Avenue sixty, you know, we've been doing, went down for the last couple of months. They're parking on the sidewalk. I have no control over them. That's, that's a F D O P, whatever, but police been there like sixty times.
So, really, this is maybe something that we should have the chief, talk to the chief about, and come back with a proposed, uh, ordinance.
Have you talked to him, Kelly?
I have talked to him.
And what is his, what's his feedback? And what is his, what's his feedback?
He agreed that we should make it mandatory and that he approved their plan before they get a building permit issued.
Okay. And is their plan, would it include them having a staging plan? If they have a lot of employees?
Definitely.
You say you've got a hundred-foot linear front to your property. You can only put so many trucks or people there. What do you, how do you do with, what do you do with the rest of the, the subs that come in? The employees, what do you, what do you, do we have an arrangement with guys next door at the park? Can they park here? I mean, you said Wondixie. I remember, I remember that.
Yeah, we, it was much more liberal. Yeah, we could.
I think I, when I went to my house, I think if someone, we'd put some people.
When Malnick built his.
Yeah.
I'll give you that as an example. They use part of the park for staging.
Yes.
And we just called up Boynton, and we just, it's a different time, obviously. But there are examples for large. We, we used to also limit the amount of subs on the property. And they would say, okay, you just, you can't have all, everybody there at once, you know, and tie up the entire island. So I mean, that's, there's some, and there's some aspects that occur, as you know, in the construction where things are going to happen. You're going to have some multiple cement trucks. You're going to, this is going to happen. And we have to have some reasonableness here, but it's important for the police to be on guard. And so if there is, I'll give you an example. Going back a little bit, there was a time period, I remember this. And so what they had to do is have a police officer out there, and they paid. They have a police officer make sure that there was a traffic, clear traffic.
We still do that.
Okay.
How about, can we, a lot of these projects don't have superintendents on site the whole time. Yeah, right? I mean.
Yeah, they find they take the towns their superintendent.
Yeah, and maybe that's where we start, is it's mandatory that they have full-time superintendent on the site to direct the traffic and make sure everything's done. Because no, any subcontractor is not going to say, oh, this, this place looks a little crowded, I won't park and double park here. They're just going to do it. If you don't have supervision on site, it'll run.
That's a consideration that's impractical.
Yeah.
Is it?
They have a full-time superintendent, full-time.
And do they, and will they enforce themselves?
Right.
You know, that's going to be.
I don't know, I had a roofer last year, and he had a full-time superintendent on the site. So I don't know why, for a ground up.
Dude, you have fancy people working for you.
No, 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 no.
I think we're adding an element of pause that doesn't necessarily have to be there.
But wouldn't there be a staging, I'd like a staging plan, sometime, our construction plan. We talked about that. I reviewed City of Palm Beach's code up there, well, now it's overboard. Guys, listen, you can't, you, you, you can have maybe one or two vehicles parking on, at the, at the site. And that is it. They require, they bus their, you know, everyone else in from staging areas, they bus them in. But I want to tell you something, they keep the roads clean, they keep the environment clean. And it's, it's overboard, but boy, it's, and they don't, I think it is their police, they don't mess around. They don't mess around. They, these contractors, our buddy Mike's contractor up there, and it's, it's his worst nightmare. Because they will.
They said, but before he moved in, they used to. I don't know, I don't know who's been here one time. We used to make them sweep and wash the streets.
I did that.
You had to, every day, every day, you better be out there cleaning the street. If not, you were going to, the next day, you were going to hear about it.
Right, but do we require that now?
I don't, I don't know.
Is it in the handbook? I bet you it's in the handbook though, right?
So I think it's an excellent idea to have a review with the contractor, with yourself, this document. Right? I mean, to me, to kick off the whole thing and say, this is the expectation. And you can have your police chief or lieutenant in the meeting as well and say, you know, here's what's going to happen if you don't. I think you need to set the standard.
So we had a guy named Doc. Doc was about six, five.
I love Doc.
Greatest, nicest guy in the world. And he would come around, the nicest guy in the world. You didn't want to mess with him, I will tell you that. You did not want to mess with him. And he'd just come over and say, listen, guys, this is how we're going to handle this. And they better listen. That's all I can tell you. And everybody did.
I mean, they make the contractor sign and initial every page on the handbook.
We had to change that.
I'm sorry? Well, last time, I've gone through the process with you guys about a year ago. And they make it, so it's not that they don't read it. And it's not like you having a meeting with them is going to make any difference, because they are, you know, on the paper, every page has to be changed or not, but.
We stopped making them sign every page.
But it was literally every page.
Yeah, I'm telling you, the biggest impact you can have is for the chief or superintendent to go there to the site, welcome them to the neighborhood. Right? Introduce themselves, they get a feel, you get a report and say, listen, guys, this is what, this is how we're going to handle this. Got to keep the streets clear, you got to keep your site clean, you got to. I'm telling you, it works wonders. So in addition to whatever meeting you want to have, which I'm super, I think you should. Especially for, for a big project, you should.
Are you okay with us requiring it?
Absolutely.
And they get a staging plan and then a traffic management plan.
I mean, so.
Isn't that in here already? Isn't that in here already, Kelly?
The plan?
Yeah, onsite parking plan, alternative parking sites. You've got it in here.
The traffic plan is just a few days during the peak of a contract. You know, ninety percent of the time, it's the individual trades.
Correct. I think it's more, enforcement is more important than rulemaking, honestly. That's my, my, you know, a patrol car going in there on a regular basis and showing the colors.
Makes the world of difference.
Make all the rules you want, and that contractor who's late or just whatever is going to show up. I don't care what the, the, what documents or signs, they're going to park. So I strongly believe in enforcement. I don't mean not to have the meeting, but enforcement is really important. Because they'll know that there's eyes on them and somebody's going to follow up on those rules.
And this is, yeah. I agree. I disagree.
So we're really saying, I think.
Your meeting end.
Hey Ken, when I hear you saying, we used to have, the police used to enforce this, all of these kind of, what's called the comprehensive construction management process tighter, more tightly than it's currently being enforced.
I don't know what's going on now. I mean, other than a few examples.
Yes.
But generally speaking, it was treated, the police would come around in the morning and in the night. And they, at the end of the day, they would come around, take a little ride by, four o'clock, just make sure everything's, you know, and during the day, they'd see it. And they just keep a handle on it. Because that, I don't think that is code, that falls, it might, you know, maybe it's within code enforcement. I think it falls outside because it's going onto the public lands now.
Yeah.
It's the streets, it's fire safety, it's the convenience of the neighborhood, it's all those considerations. And that falls within law enforcement as opposed to code enforcement, whether, whether we have the right, you know, electric panel.
Didn't we used to have a town manager who used to drive around a lot when I?
Every day.
Twenty years ago, or fifteen. Bill, Bill, that guy was driving around, is there not the?
Twice a day.
Does a town manager here have any responsibility to, to, to check this stuff out as well? Wouldn't that be in the town manager's role as well? I'm asking guys.
I mean, I think so.
That's what your town, your town manager is not just a purely administrator. I think a town manager is someone that's in the community.
So Bill Mathis. Every day, twice a day, we had a town manager, greatest town manager we've ever had. No, no disparity with anybody currently in the town, but he was just a great guy. Every day, twice a day, in the morning and in the afternoon, you would see him drive the entire town. The entire town. To the point where he got to know all the neighbors, he'd stop. If he sees somebody walking, stop and introduce himself, talk to the neighbors. I mean, it was just amazing. It was just a different sort.
Do we make the neighbors, or do we make a contractor for a new bill have a, share his plans or their plans with their neighbors?
Well, they do when they come here and the neighbors.
I know, the neighbors come here, but I think you'd have, the enforcement doesn't necessarily have to be the town manager or the police. If we said, here's the site, they then know when the violation is happening. It doesn't take the person to be circling around the neighborhood. The neighbor would say, there are seven cars parked in the street.
Yes.
You know, call the police, and just so that they, the contractor knows that the neighbors have their plan.
Well, we had it on Hudson and the, and the poor neighbor with this property on Ocean Avenue that's being built. They're parking, of course, on her, right in front of her house. And you probably can look at the log, she called a hundred times and didn't get the proper, there wasn't the proper oversight, potentially.
Called the town or called the police?
Called the police.
And they didn't respond?
They did, but did they respond timely? Did they have control of this whole, that whole environment? I don't, I don't, there's a question there. Let's put it that way, right? Because you, I love what you're saying, but if the neighbor keeps calling, 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 and the issue keeps arising every single day, then what are you doing?
So you, you can be proactive or reactive.
Yes.
And part of this message I think we need to get across is to be proactive. Similar to the concept of having a superintendent in sight, similar concept, is that, that the law enforcement goes around to the, to the job site, introduces who is the manager. There is a manager, doesn't have to be full-time. But there's somebody to contact. There's going to be a contact point. We should have a contact person for every job. I assume we do, right? So there's, that's the come-to-Jesus meeting.
Yes.
And just say, listen, this is how we're going to handle this. If you have a problem, if I'm, if I'm the chief or, or assigned person, I'm saying, listen, if there's an issue, right, where there's going to be a day where we have five cement trucks and, you know, everything going on, let us know so that we can plan and so that we can inform the neighbors or where the case is, if this is going to be an issue, and we'll work around it. We're a small town, we should be able to do this. This is not our stuff.
Well, I think, yeah, that's good. Getting back to Palm Beach, I think what happens is they'll shut the job down.
They just shut it down.
They just shut the job down.
Right.
And there's no more, it's just that quick, it's that, the police just come in.
If they don't listen.
They don't listen, they shut it down. And we need to have, our police need to have that, that ability to feel that way. And talk to us, Christie.
Yeah, and I think that's what the building official was suggesting, because I agree, looking at the current handbook, it needs to put more of the traffic responsibility on the chief of police. And so by code, when we make changes to our construction handbook, we need to bring it back by resolution. So perhaps what we can do as staff is to go through it and make sure that there's a mandatory meeting on traffic with the police department and then put more of that enforcement on police. Because what we did recently with a job where they were parking FDOT property is we started using the code enforcement citation process. And that process, not like a parking ticket, well, it is like a parking ticket in that when you get it, you have an automatic fund you have to pay. You can contest it and come in for the special badge strip, but you've got to remove the clients and you've got to pay it. Two parts to it. If you don't do that, then we can actually see more fines against you for that. So the police now have that tool sort of as an additional way, because parking tickets that are going to the county court, nobody shows up.
So I'll give you, I'll give you another example. So there was a, there used to be a towing firm called Zucallis. I don't know if you've ever heard of that.
Infamous.
Right, huh?
Infamous.
So, and Drew, I've known Drew for many, many, great guy. Anyway, he was competent. There's another story, when the plane hit the thing, he gave us all something. He was very kind. And anyway, so the, the police, if somebody would not cooperate as, as, so they'd call Zucallis, and all of a sudden, you'd see a tow truck, one of his trucks come running by. All of a sudden, you'd see these vehicles scatter.
Quickly.
So it doesn't, it just takes thinking out of the box a little bit. You can handle this. This is not a difficult process. It's communication. It's really communication. So in answer to your thing, yes, have the meeting. But as Christie and we all said, talk to the chief and see if there's more of a, and Deb is perfect for that, or if he can't do it, whoever.
We need more teeth, right, in the process.
Just kind of.
Are we getting a zone, is there a zone, did we hear about a zoning officer, this town considering?
Each of my code enforcement.
Code enforcement, excuse me?
I think we're working into it.
I heard someone was talking about that. Would that be a role of code enforcement officer if we got one?
I don't think so. I really think that.
The way we set it up is that the police can issue those.
Okay, good. And again, I would like to suggest too, and be on record, I think the town manager needs to take more active role in this process as well. Looking at, looking at the town and what's going on with the construction projects. I think the town manager needs to, needs to be an active participant.
Manny still here? Manny, so I asked, I asked Manalapan how they do it. Linda, right? And you can correct me if I'm wrong. There's code enforcement. So do you ever get calls from Linda or the town and say, hey?
Yes.
Yeah, so, all the time. So what happens is this, from now, my understanding, from what they told me, from Linda and the mayor, is that there's an issue, Linda drives around town, she sees something out of whack, she calls you, right?
Absolutely.
And then you go out there and deal with it, correct?
Absolutely.
It's a simple process. It's not hard.
And not to downplay that, I think our town manager has just, if not more issues to deal with than the.
I would agree. But that hybrid of some kind, there's going to be a little bit of balance there of some kind.
And I heard, and I hear what you're saying is to, we need to monitor this and make them be responsible for what they're doing as far as the issues with the construction sites. One of the other towns down north of us, they have a three-strike issue where code enforcement, they have like about five different types of inspectors. Right-of-way inspector, construction site inspector, code enforcement, they have all of these guys driving around. Well, and it needs to be, because they have like pretty well, over for a small little peninsula like that, they have, it's like a hundred and forty-plus construction sites. Now, with that being said, they, they'll issue you a ticket, they'll issue you a ticket. And prior, well, prior to that, there's a, there's a form that they have to sign at the pre-construction meeting that if they get three tickets, the job is shut down for a week or more, depending on, at the discretion of staff. I'm suggesting here, because really, we can issue a code enforcement citation. Well, you've got to follow due process. You've got to wait till we have our hearing and so forth. And it doesn't address it right there on the spot. I'm thinking what we need to do is let these guys know upfront, hey, okay, this is what we expect from you, but after three strikes, we're shutting your job down for a week. And I'm telling you what, that's money out of their pocket.
Yes.
Time is money. And I, I've never seen so many guys hustle out from the construction site when a vendor comes in. No, you can't park here. They'll monitor that themselves. They know that it's going to cost them to block streets, have a construction site that's not in good appearance. If they have junk and debris, you know, fence, toilets, any of that stuff. If they get a ticket, you get three of them, they shut them down.
Love it.
Yes, well, that too.
I mean, I think this is, because there's no consequences.
There's consequences then.
Yeah, because there's no consequences. Okay, I blocked the street, okay. Here, here's your citation. Okay, my site is in District Fair.
What town is that?
Palm Beach.
Of course.
Maybe Christie can look at that, see how they do that.
Now, do we need an ordinance to do it?
Well, we can do it in the construction handbook.
That's right, that's what I was going with it.
If it's amended by resolution, we bring it back here.
And get them to sign off on, hey, listen, this is what you got. And they're aware, they don't read nothing. But you signed off that we're going to shut you down after three strikes.
You know what else will that does? I mean, and we're lucky, we, chief, our chief is a very reasonable person. I think. I think he's great. And if somebody has an issue in advance, if they only would go to him in advance, explain the situation, you wouldn't have a problem. The trouble is, that's not happening. Because I think we went through a time period of fear. We really, I'm just, this is my perception, but I think we went through this fear time period where there was this disconnect between our small-town law enforcement and what's going on, on the, on the job sites and the, so if we, if we bring more of a cooperative butt with a hammer.
I'll make sure I communicate with you.
Christie, do we, what kind of liability does the town have?
Terms one.
Well, so we shut down, and they say, you know, one of those citations was very arbitrary. I guess they all can be arbitrary. I guess they all can be arbitrary, but will they have a good chance of suing and winning against the town for a loss of revenue or whatever?
I mean, if we do it, if we do it upfront, put them on notice upfront of the issue, we take it through code enforcement, they have their due process there. Most of the time, with these types of violations, it's pretty straightforward that they violated the code, because usually we have photographs, we have someone come testify. So more than likely, the violation's gonna be upheld. So I, I don't see us facing that much liability with it. I'll, you know, double-check in terms of where we have to sort of codify this, if it needs to be more of an ordinance format or something like that, and I'll look at that from a legal standpoint.
And these inspectors are outsourced to the town that are going through?
Right now, they are.
Yeah, I mean, while under this plan that we're.
Yeah, still the same way.
Okay, yeah.
But part of it's law enforcement.
Well, I get that.
Those are our.
Yeah, but someone's got a, that's, it's kind of, it's, well, you're asking the police to be code enforced.
No.
Right?
No, no, this is stuff happening on the streets.
Well, they are, they are asking to be code enforced.
The job site is in disarray. That's gonna be a police officer's decision.
That would be a code.
There we go. That's what I'm asking.
But the public, we were talking about, we're talking about staging and things like that. The disarray of the job sites totally within the building, for sure.
And maybe that's where the town manager gets it, someone active at the, trying to figure out, okay, what's going on here? Right? Is it code enforcement? Is it, is it, no, you've got proper access to the roadway system, right? Public safety.
Public safety, yeah. So it's a good segue for what I wonder, are we done with this?
Yeah, any more comment on this? Members?
I just want to make one quick comment. Mr. City had asked about, we should have our neighbors notified if something's going on. We don't notify them except for when they go through planning and zoning, but it does say in the handbook that of construction, major sites, that they are required to notify the neighbors.
In New Jer, in New Jersey, the town sends a copy of, not the full plan, but notice of the commencement work with, with what, the description of what is happening. Would be helpful maybe to have in that, a similar notice to the, probably just adjacent neighbors, not across the street or everybody on the street, with, with the name of who is the contact as well with the general contractor.
For the handbook, there's a requirement that a contractor notifies the adjacent neighbors.
Um, this is a, this is a good segue into the, to something else. And Christine, you guys comment if you, please. When we have a contractor that has multiple, let's say the Island Drive guy, right, I'll just take for example.
Island Drive South.
Island Drive South. And they have another job going on. I think it should impact all jobs that they have going on.
They can't.
Well, no, there's a way to do it. There's, there's, there's a way to do it. I know others that do it. There's a way to combat that. If they don't comply with the town code, they, it just means, I know there's a separate property owner, but there's also a contractor's license that pulls the building permit. So how we play with that is something that has to be investigated. But I think it should spread. It should spread. If they're coming in and they're agreeing to comply, because it's a separate contractor's doing that, not the property owner, the contractor's doing that. So I think there's a different realm, and I know other communities that do it, so.
I've quoted in the statute that you cannot hold one job, even the same contractor, against another job.
Can the, the impact that party is going to be the homeowner or, which is, you know what I mean, like?
And so what does the homeowner do? Well, in this case, it's, it's not a homeowner.
No, I'm saying, no, no, if you're, like, let's just say contractor has two jobs, one for me, one for you. Something happens on your site, now my site's gonna get impacted, is what I'm saying, that you, you might come back with a, if I understand what he's trying to suggest.
Well, I think, I think it depends on the, the extent of whatever's the harm is. I'm not saying, I'm not signing penny ante stuff. I'm talking about something that's dealing with something of more of a serious nature. I think there has to be some.
When there's a violation.
Some means that we have to take. We can't just turn our back to this. We just can't. We have to look at and say, okay, there has to be something that can be done, or just flout it. Come in, you talk about another project, and meanwhile, says, oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that, and then nothing. So there's, no, there's, there's gotta be something. I'm not buying that. We, we have to have some sort of means.
We have to have a town like this today, so that's what.
So we, we have to, we have to look at that. Maybe not, but at least we should look at it. There has to be some means to control this.
Well, let's, is that part of the commissioner comment? Is that your commissioner comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any commissioner comments?
I do know.
Okay. Mark?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Neil?
No.
Okay. I'd like to just have one comment, welcoming Neil Batty to the board. I don't know if we needed to have them sworn in. Did that already occur? Okay, thank you, just making sure. So thank you for joining us and being part of this, right? This, we're a small town, but I think it's important to get everyone's feedback as neighbors, as community-minded people, right? And so thank you. Appreciate you spending your time. We twisted Mark's arm to get him involved here, right? So he's, he's gone from an alternate to a full-time guy, which is fantastic. Glad to have him. I'd just like to make one other comment too. Are we, are we, we've looked at these three items. Are we looking at anything else, Kelly?
We can move on to the next item, the, like, the next one in line.
Which is, which, what are the next items, if I could ask? It's two months from now.
Two months from now? September what?
September seventeenth.
Oh, seventeen. So we're skipping August?
Typically, this board doesn't meet in August, Ken, so what I found when I came on board here, so.
All right, it looks like the next item on the list was walls fronting the right-of-way to include landscaping requirements. Percentage of the walls we want required coverage.
Okay.
That one maybe, as well as the minimum maximum sea wall heights.
Do you want to put those two on the, on the agenda for the next meeting then? Can you have, they'll give us two months for you guys to do your research on that. Is that okay? Right, let's do that.
We'll probably, Chrissy, do you think by then we'll have the?
We can look at the follow-up on this work too.
Yeah.
How much higher are the floors?
That's the question.
What did other camps do? Six inches, a foot?
I think, Goldstrom, I think, past one, I was eight.
Well, it's, it's, Neil, I'm looking at, to answer your question, Fort Lauderdale, which has gone through Broward County for a huge amount of this currently, theirs is five feet NAVD, right? So it came up from three-point-nine feet to, 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 to five feet. And they've gone, they've done something, I've talked to Ken offline about, they've done something which is very interesting. So new, new construction, you gotta come to that compliance, right? If your seawalls are disrepair, you gotta come to that compliance level. Thirdly, which I think is important, if the tidal flow breaches the current seawall height, then the land, then the property owner can be required to raise it as well. So it's a three-part deal that Broward County, I researched it and went to Fort Lauderdale in conjunction with Broward County put in place, because, you know, a lot of areas in Fort Lauderdale are very low. And they're much, I mean, lower than here, but, you know, more in my, my world, part of our seawall along the, the wall is, have, two-thirds has been raised and a third of it is still some, homeowners have not, landlords have not raised theirs, and it creates a problem for the rest of us.
Should we also add in number six as well? Because it says seawall requirements for all the construction. I think it had been brought up at one time at the meeting when they have a new construction, if we're gonna require them to do seawall as well.
Yeah. I'd like to think it's seawall, new construction, seawall disrepair, and if it is affecting the, you know, tidal flow breaching the overall seawall system.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if, if it would be good to have like a, a working document or a current document showing us the status of each one of these items? And so that when we, as we progress through these, you know, like these three items that we, you know, in process, you know, awaiting comments from council for finalization.
Kelly, would that be too much for you to do? Did you do that?
And then we can select the ones that we think we ought to go forward in our subsequent meetings.
Perfect. Okay, great. Anything else, gentlemen, ladies? Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Yep.
Definitely September seventeen.
September seventeen. Thank you.